And we need to do some repairs on it. And we need that money to be able to do the essential things that that will work out. So let's don't get too deep in with the second lien, but I do think some board members were interested in that piece because the initial concern that I heard was if we use the forty-five million for Oakdale, then nothing else is going to be done for the next ten years or so. This gives us that option to do some of the projects that we know are going to are going to come up. And so and we don't think that right now is a good time to go back to the public for any millage increase. We just don't think, uh, I don't think there's been a successful millage increase in the state in the last couple of years.
Been amended.
And so this is not something that we're looking at. This does not require, uh, going back to the voters for anything because we're just basically getting the lien out that we're using existing money to pay for things. And so we do think it's a good option. Uh, when we did speak to Beersley, actually, they said we could probably go up to forty million, but we were not, we were not comfortable with that. We thought thirty would take care of the needs. And so we felt comfortable with that, and that's what we'd be recommending. So, uh, I mean, we just wanted to interject that at this point. Uh, but Jake, let's go on with the budget.
Okay, absolutely.
And then, uh, we'll go ahead and 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 get this done. And then we'll come back and have a better explanation of the second lien bonds later. Jake, was there anything else, though, that you want to say on second lien bonds?
Well, right here. The only thing I would say is with each of our bonds, there is a five-year call date. So let's say we get a five-point-two-five percent interest rate. We borrow thirty million in six to nine months. We've got those funds available. We use the forty-six million in bond funds to take care of Oakdale. We've got the money in the building fund. In five years, we could come back in and actually take four of our bonds, but they, three of them have really good rates, four of our bonds. And if you watch the Fed in a couple of years, you see they'll start pulling back interest rates at some point, we should be able to refinance it and ask the public, Dr. Perry had mentioned, to get past that thirty-seven, thirty-eight marker for debt service payments. We have to ask the public to extend our millage. So if we ask them to extend and refinance, not only for this board and these leaders, but for future leaders, we're leaving enough freedom and room for them to be successful.
And if we do this thirty million, I think the other, the other important point, it did not, Beersley did not think it would damage our bond rating because of our capacity to generate money. So they felt like we would still be in good shape, um, bond rating wise. Okay, Jake, thank you.
Okay. Looking at the next one, if we go to page, there you go. Here's the bonded debt schedule. You scroll down, you can see the debt ratio right now. There's two-point-seven billion overall debt. We've got a hundred and seventy-six million, six-point-four-seven percent. So outstanding, outstanding. A lot of districts are in that thirteen to fourteen percent. I believe the state average is around twelve. Looking at the next slide, just the bonded debt coverage. This is the amount we bring in for debt service. You can see what goes to payments. You can see what we've got set aside for transferring, um, to our building fund. Looking at our next page, here's the overall budget forecast. This one I just like to do just so it gives me an idea as we go out. And it gives you an idea as a school board as we go out, what happens if our assessed value grows at three percent, if state foundation funding increases at two-point-three-three percent, if student count stays the same or increases, if teacher salaries go up, if we add a thousand dollars to the base, if we pay out a bonus, which we do have some funds inside of this year's budget, Dr. Perry can talk about, that is available for a bonus should the board and Dr. Perry want to move forward with that. But I'd just like to have the board be able to look at what's going to happen over the next five years if these things fall into place. And you can see we're in a good position to still make transfers over the, each of the next four years, considering the budget that you've got here. Uh, when you scroll down just a little bit, you can see some assumptions I've made. You know, I did a thousand dollars added to the base of certified salaries, two percent, which would be the equivalent of a thousand to fifty thousand, um, for our classified salaries. My hope, my desire, and I know Dr. Perry and our leadership team, is that we can do more. It would be our hope and desire that we can do more. And so much of that counts on, it depends on not just the assessed values and our operations, but it also depends on us getting students to Rogers. So great place to be. We want them to be here. We want to pay our teachers top-notch dollars. So that's the five-year. When you look at our building fund, again, I just wanted to give you kind of a bird's.
Jake, real quick, the, um, one of the numbers was the Learns Act had two-point-eight for this year.
Yes.
Is that something that's going to continue at all going forward, or is it just pledged for this?
They have, we have been told it will continue moving forward. Um, if I had to guess at this juncture, I would say in about three years, we'll get some new information and see what we're, what we're doing with those funds at that time.
That question was asked repeatedly because I think a lot of school districts were making a huge investment in salaries, and they were worried, once they got to that level and the money was taken away, the word that was used was perpetual, uh, funding at that level.
Perpetuity.
We all have concerns about that, uh, but it was stated that it was committed forever.
But I saw that you included it for each of those five years. I wasn't sure.
I, I am.
What the state's commitment is there's.
I am, I am counting on them doing it at least for the next three.
Thank you. If that were to go away, a lot of our districts, so out of east and in south, would just be decimated because they took salaries from thirty-seven thousand up to fifty thousand. And so if that money is, if it was withdrawn, they, they just won't be able to sustain that.
Two, there's two-hundred-and-fifty-plus school districts across our state. If they took that funding away, it would be under a hundred, just like that.
But we share your same concern is that, uh, there's a lot of promises made during particular years and then as years go on and there's not as much need to make those promises, some things are taken back. Or that money in that category would stay there, but other categorical funds are taken away. And so the net result is less. Uh, but we have a concern about that, but these are only projections here.
Correct.
We'll work on that on another, another time.
We try and update them after every legislative session. So that's a little bit, uh, the, yeah, you can see the budget. The next page, it does have our building fund. And again, not each year do we spend the total site acquisition, the HVAC installments. We don't spend that amount. But just so you guys kind of have an idea, again, we don't receive any facilities funding. So what we've got in our building fund, we do have to put towards the upkeep of our facilities, our patrons. That's one of the things I love to hear when they walk into our buildings that have been remodeled, just so thankful that west side, that north side, that some of those old schools that have the history and the heritage, they look so good. We want to keep doing that as we go along. But if you scroll down, you can see our overall building fund stays relatively healthy. Transfer from the operations budget, you can see that five million. Based on my projections, I feel pretty comfortable we'll continue to have that set, fund set aside. Obviously, the one thing I would say is if we make any increases to teacher salaries and we make any increases to our debt service, that amount we transfer could lower. Now, the things that offset that is our student numbers and our assessed values. So we'll watch those things as we go along like a hawk. I'm almost done. I'm almost done. We scrolled to one more page. So this one just gives you another review. This is something that Beersley, our security group does, they, our financial group sends out. You can see the assessed values. You can see the total certified millage. The one thing that sticks out to me, we talk about categorical funds, and you can see the English language learner aid, um, the students that we've got, you know, we started in twenty-twenty-one, five thousand sixty-four students this year, four thousand three hundred ninety-seven. You can see those funds have actually relatively remained the same. When you listen to Mr. Davis and everything that we're pouring in and state requirements, they're actually a little bit more than what we're receiving in funding. So this just kind of gives you guys a good idea of where we're at and, uh, excited, really, truly excited about where our school district is headed and the options and opportunities we have to take care of our teachers as well as our facilities. So that is an overview of the twenty-three, twenty-four Rogers Public Schools operating and district budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, board members, on the proposed budget?
And Jake, at this point, we do need to talk a little bit about the bonds, correct?
Yes.
Okay, as, as we went into this, um, we were hoping to provide a budget. This particular budget does provide a five-hundred-dollar bu, uh, bonus to our certified staff and a one percent corresponding bonus to our classified, because the way that we did that, starting salary is fifty thousand, so one percent of that would be five-hundred dollars. And so with classified, they get a corresponding percentage. We had hoped to do a little bit more and may do a little bit more in the spring, but right now with our enrollment numbers and such flux, we're a little bit worried about that. And then this was mentioned briefly, but I don't know that it sunk in that well, is that our property insurance went up from seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to one-point-five million. None of us saw that coming at all. And so that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase was part of the money we had allocated to making up that other amount of money that we were hoping for a bonus. So what we're proposing in this particular bonus is give the five-hundred dollars right for Christmas, so individuals could use that during the holiday season. If our student enrollment holds, then we'll look at additional funding, because we said all along that any bonus would be dependent on student enrollment, state funding, and any other expenditures. And so that, that one was a, was a pretty big hit for us that we did not, we anticipated an increase, but not that much. And so this would include a five-hundred-dollar bonus at Christmas with the possibility of looking at some other things in the spring when, uh, when we solidify our spring enrollment numbers.
Five-hundred dollars is how much for the total? Is it a million to do five-hundred dollars?
It is. It's actually about one-point-two million when you include the benefits.
And it's, I mean, I, I hope that individuals can appreciate that this is not insignificant. Uh, it, it is probably, it is probably significant to some folks to get the five-hundred dollars, maybe not as much to others, but in terms of the entire district, it's over a million-dollar commitment to us in some tough times. But we do think our folks are the most important asset that we have, and, and we're willing to put that in. So sorry, Jake, I just wanted to make sure that the board understood, because there were some other numbers in there, in some of that, that was seven-fifty and some other, but I wanted to clarify, we were at, we were at five-hundred with this.
Thanks, sir.
What is our enrollment number right now?
Uh, Charles enrollment number is fifteen-five. And we.
When does that lock in until, I mean, is it, is it, they look at it every day, or is it? No, I'm in as far as for.
The October count is the big time, and then the spring is.
So they'll look at it in October and then they'll look at it again later?
And what they, what they'll do is they look at it quarterly. Okay? Yes. So they're funding us based on a three-quarter average from last year, which was fifteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-six students. So they took the first, second, and third quarters, did an average of those three to get fifteen-five-sixty-six. So this year, they're going to take the fifteen-five-thirty-one, and hopefully we find more students and that number increases so that our average for funding next year is a little bit above. But right now, that's why I'm budgeting for declining growth, because right now we're down about thirty-six students compared to what we budgeted for last year.
Okay.
And that's our concern. At eight-thousand dollars a kid, it really begins to add up quickly in, in the total budget when you begin to look at that, because thirty students is over nearly a quarter million dollars.
I didn't, I didn't double check, but did we take out Garfield in our operational?
So we haven't for this year. We have not for this year. As we go into next year, that will be some cost savings that we'll incur.
About a half a million a year? So we're still estimating?
I suspect it'll be a little bit over that. I think when you look at some of the routes and different things, we'll see how efficient we can get. Efficiency is kind of the name of the game. I know Dr. Hill and Mr. Davis, Mr. Lee and Chrissy are doing an outstanding job checking the numbers, and we can keep our FTEs low, we can manage some of those efficiencies. I think we're going to have a little bit more savings than that.
If we maintain, if we maintain student enrollment, because if we lose the, if we lose the student enrollment, but even at that, if we lost every one of them at, what did we have, Christie? It was eighty, eighty-some students? So we were losing seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, even if we lost every single one of those students. Um, I can't do the math real quick, but eighty thousand or eighty times eight thousand, fifty-six thousand or so, and so.
Six hundred and sixty thousand.
Six forty.
So we would still benefit a couple hundred thousand if nobody came. So we do think there'll be a savings, but we got to wait to see how many of those students come with us to see the net result of that. But there will be some electricity savings, there'll be some bus savings, there'll be some other things.
Food service. The operations out there are typically over a million, about one-point-two, one-point-three million, depending on different things we've got going, so be some good savings.
If any other questions or discussion on the proposed budget, which includes the five-hundred-dollar bonus.
Bonus to certified, the one percent bonus to classified, with the understanding we'll revisit in the spring. But we did want to give some money, because a lot of times our folks depend on that for Christmas, and we didn't want to, to wait on that. We wanted to go ahead and put that in now.
And we want them to come back. We want them to.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Mitch, a second by Paige. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jake. Item five-point-two, our MOU with the athletic trainers, once again.
I believe that we have gone over this multiple times, and so we finally arrived at the point that, uh, we do have Northwest providing the, the two trainers and then with the orthopedics, uh, the additional one. So that would give us three trainers, and we feel like this is the best deal that we can get. And we actually do appreciate Northwest because they actually stepped up more than what, uh, originally we had talked about to, to help us get through this year. So, um, members of the board, we feel like this is the, the best, uh, deal that we can get this year, and we're certainly appreciative, so we offer this as a recommendation.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved by Mitch, second by Amy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Now come to the public comment section of our board meeting, where school district patrons are given the opportunity to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Do we have anybody for the public comment section? Seeing none. Dr. Perry, your comments?
Do we need to take a break on anything, or are we good to go?
Do we need to take a break?
Do we?
Well, I tell you what, uh, I do gauge the interest level of the audience, and so, uh, I will do mine quickly then.
That we do not need to take a break then, right? Is that everybody good? Everybody need a restroom break, or you?
Yes, thanks, and thank you. I will go much quicker than, than I had anticipated. But when you have a presentation by Mr. Hawk, you just can't just appreciate that.
Follow that.
No, you can't.
With your eyes open.
Uh, nor would we want to. Uh, so, no. We do appreciate that very comprehensive view of the budget. So thank you, Mr. Hawk. Um, uh, school visits, uh, our first visit is going to be September the twentieth. We're going to meet at Tillery Elementary at ten-ten, and then we'll go to ten-fifty. And we're going to do this format. If it works, then we're going to continue to do it. If it doesn't, we'll revisit it. Um, so at ten-ten, what they're going to do is they've got a group of third graders, I think, and fourth graders that we're going to get to share a little bit of time with. And then we've got some teachers that we're going to share some time with. Uh, and what we've talked to the teachers about is share the good things that's going on in your school so that we know the good things that are happening. And then we've asked them in a very constructive, productive way, what can we do as a district, as a school board, to better serve you and help you with your needs? We thought that would give you a better glimpse of what was happening in the school because you've taken so many tours of the building. You probably don't want to go through that again, but to hear from teachers, uh, is pretty neat. Now, we know that sometimes the, the students, the younger they are, you know, it is, it's a lot more cute and it's a, it, it's very interesting. Uh, but now she's picked some of the leaders of the school that would kind of talk to us about some things, so you get an opportunity to kind of share with some students. Then we'll go over to north side at about eleven o'clock, same situation there. We're going to be meeting with some students, be meeting with some, uh, teachers, and they are going to provide us lunch there as we talk to the teachers. And so eleven-forty, we'll be done, get you back. Um, if you can't make it, that's perfectly fine, because we know that some of you with jobs, there's a lot of different things going on. We'll provide a little makeup day that you can go back and, and get this one if you need to. So come if you can, just tell us, or text me if you're not coming, so we're not looking for you and waiting on you. Um, but if this works, then we'll continue. We'll talk about it during our Oakdale tour and just see if you appreciated that more or if you want to go for something else. So be at Tillery at ten-ten, and we've got those particular times. I know it's kind of a funny time, but it's time that we have lunches and some different things, and there's a switch with kids, so we kind of had to work with the school schedule. One of the main things that we told principals, don't do the dog and pony show. It takes up a lot of time and consumes your time. We want you to focus on teaching and learning. Hey, Oakdale Middle School, uh, as we go into that particular school and as we go into the tour, just wanted you to know on the history of the finance, our first review of that was at forty-nine million. So when they came back, uh, when, uh, Flint Co. and when Hite Jackson came back and it's forty-nine million, we said, guys, we, we cannot fund that. So they came back with forty-seven million, and again, it was a situation that we told them that we dedicated forty-five million to it, and so they came back and were right now under forty-five million. So as we go through that, as we take the tour, know that we've already cut nearly four million from that particular project. So the, what we have left is what we think is absolutely necessary. Now, this is a good thing, and number two, that I think is always important to understand, is that the MEP, which is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, that will normally consume about forty to fifty percent of your budget, no different in this. So the mechanical and electric, you will not see any of this when you come into a school. So forty percent of the budget, you're not going to see anything, but you will feel the air conditioning, you feel the heat, and when you use the restrooms, things work proper. Uh, code ADA and safety, that's going to be about seventeen million or another thirty-nine percent. And again, this is not uncommon when you're renovating an old building. Forty percent, you're not going to see much of this either. You'll see some sprinklers, but you've never looked at that before. We will bring some of the office area out so we can do some, some better supervision, but most of this you won't necessarily see. The new gym you will see, uh, that's eighteen percent of the budget. But again, that gym is not just a new gym. We're taking some of the space from the old one and we're converting it into cafeteria space that we can get more kids in there and dining. Plus, this gives them, um, a gym where they can hold all the students at one time. And then part of the gym with locker room system is our safe room. So the safe room is costing us about one-point-two million or so, uh, somewhere in that neighborhood. So when you see the cost of the gym, it's not just a gym with bleachers in it. We got to create the safe room according to the new building code. So part of that is that safe room piece that we have. The other two-point-five million, so four percent of the budget, are things you're going to see. So you'll see the paint, you'll see the new front entryway that we kind of talked about, the library that had a little bit more character to it than what it does now, some paintings, some, some sprucing up of, of a particular thing. So on the twenty-sixth at five o'clock, we have Michelle from Hite Jackson. She's going to be there to help lead the tour. We'll take you around the building, show you the high points. We don't anticipate that lasting more than thirty or forty minutes. We'll go to the library, and then we'll ask any questions that you might have. And then we have a little bit of follow-up conversation too on the second lien bond that once you've had some time to digest that. You don't need to make any decisions until December. So right now is just the information time. You've seen the floor plans. We'll take you through the tour and actually show you where things are going to be put together in with that, uh, and then we'll go from there. Questions on that? Okay. Legacy building, uh, and I'm going to go through this very quickly. I'm going to do this in less than ten minutes. Um, and so with that, we know that often we focus on daily processes and daily procedures, and sometime we never look up to see what we're going to try to go to in five years. And so this is what we're looking at with the legacy building. We're taking the five-year plan and trying to operationalize that down into real tangible things that you can see, feel, taste, and touch. And so this is the first attempt at it. Once you guys had a look at it, then we're going to send it out to the rest of the staff and send it out to our community, get feedback from that, manipulate it a little bit, and then bring it back to you. But we don't want to be doing stuff that you're not supportive of. We don't want to be working toward things that you're not aware of and didn't know was happening. So right now, we've broken this down into each one of the departments, and you've got, you had a copy of this, so I'm not going to go through every single bit of it, but I do want to point out some big highlights. First of all, the quantitative measures, we think all of our schools should be a B or better. We do feel like that, and we feel like we're going to have to give some more resources and help, but we can do that. Graduate, graduation rate ninety-five percent or better, we think we can reach that particular goal. The ACT score of nineteen or better, we're a little bit behind on that right now, but we do think that's a goal that we need to get to. Some of the rest of the things that's in there, uh, we got to help create a learning depository so if there's, uh, resources that folks need, there's a one place that they can go online and pick those up. We're looking at a signature program at New Tech. We need a couple more students at New Tech, especially if we could pull some from Rogers, that would help with the enrollment. A lot of our kids that go to New Tech are from Heritage, so we want that signature program that would attack, that would attract some other students. And then we've talked about number six often, and this has actually come from a lot of you guys. We've got to do some unique opportunity for our gifted students at the middle school level. Uh, we have some things at the high school level with some of our AP courses and some of our concurrent credit, but we've got to do something at the middle school level. And so we're going to have a little bit more discussion about that in a future meeting about the different models and what you would be interested in going. Of course, we talked about a purpose-driven curriculum, making sure that students don't just go to school to graduate, but to go to school to get some skills necessary to be successful. We've talked about the junior ROTC program, and that might be the signature program at New Tech of doing a, a junior ROTC program with a service learning, uh, kind of academy and do criminal justice with that, do paramedics, and do first responders, some of that thing before we've got a public service aspect of that. If we have to do it at, at some of the schools to, to do that, uh, we might end up looking at that, but we'll look at that to see what we can do, because we do have to have space for that. And the junior ROTC takes a lot of space. Uh, I don't know that we'd have that space at Heritage or have it at Rogers. And so that's why we considered, uh, maybe New Tech for that. Elementary legacy goes, that universal preschool, we've talked about that, about establishing partnerships, uh, to, if we have some community-based preschools, can we get them to help teach the same standards and look for the same things that we have? Because right now, we did an analysis of students coming from our preschools and coming from some other preschool options, and there's marked difference about that kindergarten readiness. And so if we can partner with some of those folks and say, we need students to be able to do this, then perhaps we can utilize those services just as effectively. Uh, a conversation about dual-language charter schools, uh, that we've actually had some of our parents, English-speaking parents, that would love their students to be enrolled in a dual language, because we know that language development, uh, is a lot easier to do when you're younger, uh, might be something we look at. We got to look at expanding our, um, alternative learning, especially at the elementary levels. I know that Ms. Brown's already worked on that to some degree, but we want to make sure that people have a safe, orderly environment which to teach and learn. And sometimes we have some students who severely disrupt that. Maybe look at some summer enrich- Maybe look at some summer enrichment options for some of the elementary folks. And I'm not talking about necessarily at-risk students, but our gifted and talented students about looking at what can we do to better offer some programming over the summer to make ourselves look as a more attractive district. We're also looking at number six. We, we just don't think we've got enough time in one hundred and seventy-eight days to get some of these kids. Mr. Davis showed you some of the examples of some of the students that we're getting in. Some of those students, we're trying to catch them up, have them to be English proficient when they can't even read in their own language. We've also got some other students who are just not being successful. So, and then increase the percentage of students reading on grade level. We do think that's critical to everything that we do. Building operations, open school clinic, do the medical professions there at Heritage, the diesel mechanic. We've got to renovate the Heritage High School indoor turf. That building has some serious issues. And so we're going to have to look at that. The thirty million that we talked about gives us some opportunities to, to maybe look at that. The daycare staff businesses. One of the things that's happening with that is that the incentive payments that the federal stimulus money was giving out to daycare centers is ending. And so with that ending, there's a projection that a third of the daycare centers in the United States are going to close within the next six months. If that happens, it's going to make a bad situation even worse. Also, the report is here for Arkansas, is that an average family is spending twenty-three percent of their salary on daycare? So a quarter of your salary is gone to daycare right at the very beginning. And so a lot of our staff members plus businesses are struggling with the same thing. Can we partner? We actually have had some conversations with some folks about providing some financial incentives to get some of that up and going. I think number seven, we're seeing hotter falls and hotter springs. We've got to get some of that AC into some of the elementary gyms. The east side one worked, and so we think we can duplicate that. And so put at least two of those units in per year at our schools, if not more. And then continue with those remodel projects. Those are not in order. They're just, we know we've got to do some work at Grace Hill, Mathias, Reagan, Tillery. And then we've got to do something to alleviate some of the enrollment issues at RHS. We're, we're probably two hundred or so kids over what we need to be there right now. And so can we do some things to kind of help with that? Finance legacy grows. We, we talked about that second lien bond, about creating funds to finish Oakdale in three years and then by still maintaining our competitive salary schedule. And one of the things that want to mention with this is that a lot of folks look at that starting salary. But if you look at the average salaries, what do people actually make? And I think that with the report, the latest report that we had, Jake, did we not have the second highest salary in the entire state for the average salary? So I think a lot of people really front load that front one, but then they don't pay as much as you go through and you can't really reach the highest levels. But on average, we're the second highest-paid school district in the state. So people, it's actually working, getting. So I think that's something that we can be proud of, but we want to continue that because we do. We've communicated that often and but
Internally and externally.
Yeah. Now, the problem is, is that information is two years behind. So it's sometimes hard to, to kind of get too excited about that. But two years ago, we were second place and we don't see anything to where we shouldn't be in that situation. But we do let folks know that we spend a lot of money on our, on our people. Human resources, grow your own program. We've got to start recruiting teachers early. We've got a good start with that. Tiana and Joanne is actually working on a program to where we can identify some kids early on, get those individuals in the teacher program. We've got to match, we're going to do a staffing audit to match student interest. And what that means is, is to make sure that the people are teaching, are teaching classes that kids want. Because we want to make some changes and some things, but we can't keep adding staff if our kids don't grow. But what we can do is if you've got low numbers and there's no student interest in that, we want to replace that with a program that has much better options. Number five is we are, we're looking, trying to find a way to identify principals and other folks that are leaving. Try to do that a year ahead of time and maybe even interviewing for those folks six months ahead of time and getting those folks in so that they hit the ground running on day one the following year as opposed to doing some things later. Marketing goes, we've said this all the time, we just want to celebrate what is happening here in Rogers. Number one, we're going to do this, is that we have a lot of people to help us. The, two of the individuals that come to mind very quickly is the Chamber. Our Chamber is incredible. They go out of their way to help us. Also, our local police departments go out of their way to help us. So starting next month, we're going to invite one of those groups in and have a community impact award and recognize those people and publicly say, we thank you for what we do. We don't just really take this for granted. We, we do that, we do that with full knowledge. We're going to do some things too to get our name in the paper, try to do the Blue Ribbon School kind of pieces. You know, find out what folks actually want to know and get that information to them and then highlight our folks. Career and technical, you see those things. We'll talk about that a little bit later because I'm going to keep to my ten minutes. Quick updates, we gave the enrollment number that's a little bit over what we had budgeted. I think the budget number was fifteen-five. We're at fifteen-thirty-six, I believe, Charles. Fifteen-thirty-six. So we're a little bit over that right now, but that October count is real important. And so we're kind of waiting to see what happens on that. Several of you were worried about the swim team because we were swimless there for a little bit. We've got a, Keith was able to work out a contract with the Swim Academy. Arkansas Swim Academy on the other end of town. And so we do have a place now that our, our students can swim. Just an announcement for folks who may be listening or watching, those free and reduced lunch applications is critical. You don't, right now, there's been a grace period. So if you got free lunch last year, you get free lunch this year. After September twenty-seventh, if you're not approved, you lose that. Not only does it hurt the kids, it hurts us too. So we're really trying to encourage everybody who, who had a free lunch that didn't apply for it this year to make sure they do that. COVID numbers are down a little bit, so we're kind of glad about that. We had kind of saw that spike, but that got better. We will produce the annual report for you in October. And as Mr. Davis said, the letter grades are coming out here toward the end of the month. We will not, I believe there's an embargo on that, right, Mr. Davis, until after October? So we can share it with limited folks. We just can't share it with everybody. So that's quick.
Anything new on? You can breathe now.
Yeah.
On the east side remodel?
Yes, on the east side remodel. And that's in the Friday update that I'm sending you guys out. I was trying to keep things limited here. But on a, we are finishing on the media center and the music room. So that is going to be done this week or so. The only thing, the only pieces of significance we have left is that the restrooms, we've got to pour the epoxy floor, we'll do that over Christmas. There's some landscaping pieces that we've got to do and then the permanent glass. Right now, we've got some glass in with wedges and, and some different things just so that we could isolate some areas. But with that, it may appear that we would actually be done with east side in. And when they told us it'd be done in September, my first question is what year? But it does seem like it is going to be. We'll finish up with almost everything. And just to acknowledge that staff, that is just incredible. And, and I went, and I'll tell this one story and then I'll quit because I do think this is kind of representative of our folks. I went over there earlier in the year and there were, there were probably a dozen people in there working. The air wasn't working extremely well at that time. Everybody was pouring the sweat. And two really significant things. First of all, we helped get this one room done. And I told the teacher, and because I went over and kind of helped them a little bit. And once we got that done, I said, well, now you can kind of feel a little bit more relaxed that your room is ready. And she said, oh, no, this is not my room. This is one of my colleagues that couldn't make it in. And so we're just getting this ready for her because she's got some other issues and she couldn't come out to do that, but we know she would worry about it. So coming in, and they had their kids in another part of the building and they were just doing that. And then I was talking to another teacher and literally they were welding in the background and the sparks were flying down. And there was somebody with a jackhammer in the bathroom. And then they had this lift going through, putting up ceiling tiles. And she had her little cart moving things. And I said, I'm really sorry that, that, you know, that we've got so far late on this. We've been on them all year to try to get them done by this. She just looked up, I mean, she was just pouring the sweat and said, that's no problem. This is east side and we'll just get it done. And I just think that attitude, no matter what happens, no matter what's going on, this is east side. We'll get it done. And instead of complaining, instead of criticizing, because there could have been a lot and there could have been a lot of legitimate complaining, this is east side and we'll just get it done. I just kind of thought that, that epitomizes a lot of what our people do in this district. It's not just them. There's other schools that lived through this and Oakdale is getting ready to go through this. But the, just that spirit, that's no problem. We'll get it done. And then just being willing to come out and help a colleague that couldn't come out, that just kind of shows the quality of people we got. So with that, President, I'll stop.
Other questions for Jeff? Thank you, sir. Let's go to feature action items. Item 9.1 next month, the resolution for compliance with salary increases more than 5%. Standard annual reports, item 9.2 will be the district annual report that you've already referenced, Dr. Perry. And then we've got also the K-12 curriculum committees will be also providing some reports. Any other additions to the agenda that board members have for the month of October? Okay, hearing none. Announcements, the annual ASBA Region One meeting is October the 10th at 5:30 in Springdale.
Are we all riding together on that? Or are you guys going to go separately?
I'll probably just meet you there.
Okay. Is that true for everyone?
Springdale High School, I believe, or was it Harvard?
I'll just meet you there.
Yeah, remember.
It's in Springdale. I'll, I'll get you the information, but I just need to get some vehicles lined up. But if you're going on your own, I'll tell you what, you text me and tell me if you want to ride. I'll have the vehicle ready and I will chauffeur you there if you want to. If you want to just go by yourself, do that. But do try to do that by this Friday so that, so that Charles can get the, the vehicle reserved and, and all that.
I believe that's at the School of Innovation, which is in East Springdale, right?
I don't know, but I will find out and I'll give you that information. I'll make sure you got it.
So follow up on that then, our next board meeting, October 17th at 5:00 p.m. So that's all we have for announcements. We do have some school tours tomorrow, starting at ten-ten at Tillery. So hope everybody can make it, that's available for that time. And we have no need for an executive session, so we are adjourned. Thank you all for, for coming tonight.